Good afternoon, everyone. It is 4:30. We shall begin if you would please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roland? I also have the Vexian screen. Okay, today is Wednesday, September 19, 2018 already, and may I please have a roll call? Tom Eggers?
Here.
Greg Gils?
Here.
Pete Hamel?
Here.
Sean Brewster?
Here.
Brad Hent?
Here.
Thank you. Before approval of agenda, I would like to rearrange a few items under new business. We will go number four, number seven, number five, number six. Reason being is our city attorney, Micah, may need to step out around 5 o'clock. So, do we have a motion to amend the agenda, the order of the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. And a roll call. Gils?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
And with that said, now, do we have a motion to approve the agenda that is before you?
So move.
Support.
And a roll call. Gils?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Thank you. Second on our agenda, public comments. Just seeing if you're paying attention over there, Ty. Okay, we're (laughing). There are none, so we will move on to the consent agenda. We would like to point out, under the minutes, in one of the paragraphs down below where Micah was sharing with us, let's see, after a roll call was taken, second paragraph. Attorney Scroos gave an update on the three major nuisances, not tree major nuisances. So, we're just, little typo there. We'll make that amendment. Other than that, do you have questions, comments, any discussion regarding the consent agenda?
So you need a motion to approve the correction?
Well, if the motion that you make is to approve everything under the consent agenda, all it wants...
I would so move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Discussion? There is none. May I have a roll call, please? Hent?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Gils?
Aye.
Thank you. I know we just had a call go out with, did SCAT go out as well, Brad? Do you know on that?
Yes.
All right, so Kevin Miller may be unable to attend, so I would like to share with the recommendation. And I know, Greg, you served on that committee of the interview panels as well.
That's correct.
Do you recall how many candidates applied or how many were interviewed?
Initially, there were six. The sixth one, we did not ever, we did not ever connect, did not return phone calls in Seoul. We assumed she was not interested, but we did interview five for the position.
Wonderful. Thank you. And after the interviews, the position, and to let you know, this is to replace Kevin Miller in the full-time position he had with the city. So, the recommendation comes before us as Dakota Brown with a starting salary of $35,000, with a $1,000 raise after six months, as well as a $1,500 raise after receiving her paramedic certification. She will also receive the training officer pay. A question that was posed to me earlier was, is this in the budget? It is replacing that position. Kevin's salary was a little different, and Ange can share what that difference is.
I apologize. I told you I was gonna do that. My afternoon was shot. I didn't get those numbers put together.
Oh dear, you'd be busy. No, I'm just kidding.
If I remember right, it's just, it's a little bit more than what?
Like around $2,000 is what we were thinking. It's around $2,000 more than what Kevin's salary was.
And Kevin still will remain the director of the ambulance service?
That I would need to confirm.
Because I would hope he would.
Yes.
He's done a very good job in the past.
And when he resigned with us, he is willing, he is staying on. So, for right now, we'll do the approval of Dakota Brown, and when we speak with Kevin, we will have clarification on that as well.
I just want to make sure that he still remains the director.
And receives the director pay.
And receives the compensation for that, yes.
Yep.
Because he's done a very good job with that ambulance service since he's taken over.
We are fortunate to have him stay on board and then to help us with the process of replacing his position. So that is something I will check with Kevin on as far as the director.
Quick question, Mayor. The certification bonus. I'm assuming that's based upon the fact that to have this position may need to be certified?
Correct.
So it's...
I think that's something that we had asked for this position.
So it's not if, but when.
Pardon me?
It's not an if, but when.
If it is, when.
She is currently working on that certification, expects to complete it into this month yet, so she's very close.
Wonderful. Okay.
She's young, but she's got some get-up-and-go. She's been on the ambulance team for three years. She started in high school. She recently became the training officer for it, and yeah, she was, she wants the job. She's always asking what she can do to, she's been a great help to Kevin in her, in the role she's serving now. Yeah, comes highly recommended.
Thank you. Any other questions, Council?
I'll make the motion as stated.
Thank you.
And I'll support that.
Okay. Take your pick. Last request for questions, comments, discussion. There is none. Thank you very much. I will find out with Kevin on that, and either he or I will get back to you regarding the director position. May I have a roll call, please? Brewster?
Aye.
Gils?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Thank you. And now we'll skip to number seven. We'll have our discussion on the solid waste contracts. Thank you, Mark and Jeff. Jeff, Mark, for being here today. As you know, we kind of extended our contract with them a little bit so that way we could meet and figure out what our goal is and where we are with the city. Some of the things that we had talked about over the past year was the ordinance. We're finally enforcing and working with that. Both haulers have noticed a difference in recycling. Very impressive. And I will attest to that because I have seen the containers on the days that you pick it up. It's just nice to see the participation. We also received comments from the public about thanking us for the letter in their utility bill because many did not know of all of the things that could be recycled now. So, it's almost a reverse. There's almost, someday there's going to be more recycling than solid waste. So, in talking with our garbage haulers and what we have done in the past, what we are proposing before the council is to have a agreement with the waste haulers, solid waste haulers through, let me find my notes. One moment, if you don't mind. It would be through 2022. It would be a five-year contract with a 25 cent increase beginning of August 2019, again, August 2020, August 2021, August 2022. One of the goals we have in mind is to become, making sure our residents are capable of getting the hydraulic containers by December 31, 2021. And that is something that the haulers have made known, that they have an interest in making that investment and seeing to their residents, their customers, getting to that. And then we can figure out how that's all gonna work out in the next couple of years. And then, when that happens, when we can be getting all of our residents to have the hydraulic container, then they have the option of going fully automated. And when they're fully automated, their businesses can be better. One thing that Mark and I talked about was, I had inquired was, can we recycle every week? Because that's a question that customers have posed to us. At the time, there's not enough manpower or hours in the day to run the trucks every week due to the schedules that you have now, and everything is manual. I shouldn't say everything. Some of your business, Jeff, would you concur? Most or some of your business? Okay. So that's something that's not doable now. I know there's going to be a couple of questions Council wanted to ask. One of the questions that was raised just within the past couple of days was, what's the possibility of having recycling every other week? So, I don't know who would like to answer how, I'm not sure how your business would work, but I would invite you, we have to have it recorded, to make any answers at the podium with the microphone. Please, I'm sorry. This is the only way we can record it. Thank you, Mark. And...
Would you wanna just take the fifth Thursday out? Is that what you're thinking? And then going every other week, or?
Just...
Is that, was that the question? Is that right?
Yeah, what would it look like? And I'm not saying tomorrow, but what would it look like if, you know, you continued what you're doing, but eventually we were to recycle every other week? Just where it's not your first, third?
Right.
If your A schedule, your second, fourth, if your B schedule. But what would it look like every other week?
I think if we get more people recycling and get to that point, yeah, that's a real possibility. But I think doing it now, I don't think there's really enough to do it. I think we gotta give it a year or so and see how it all works out and see how much more we get.
Okay.
The one thing, if we switch it to every other week, the people that know their routes right now are gonna have to learn a new route, so I don't know.
Sure, and I see that as just a communication...
Well, that's gonna throw everybody off, but...
Yeah. And I see that as, like I said, it's not something that we would ask of you to change like right now.
Right.
But in time, is that something that we could look forward to?
Yeah, absolutely.
And because I know with the route change that Schwartz had, it seemed to be a little craziness at first, but myself, I think it's working out okay. Your route is working out okay with the changes. So, that would be, I look at that as just a communication effort that we can make with the community.
I'm open to that, so if we get more people recycling and they get more, and the town starts doing it more, that'll be, I'm good with that, so.
Okay. And Brad, what was your question?
I was just gonna say, that's the number-one complaint that I've heard over the last three months when we started talking garbage is, people want recycling more often, and I think more often is every other week, true every other week. And it'd be easy to set up because all you gotta do is, Route A is this, and Route B, go every other month, send out a calendar the first of the year. I think it'd be pretty easy to do, because that's the number-one thing I hear, is people want recycling more often.
Right.
And I think if they did recycle more often, I think you would end up with less garbage. I know it's benefited other towns that have gone to every other week.
Lamar's did.
Sue Center has, and their recycling has picked up. That's the number-one complaint.
And that's what I hear too. That's what I wanna know about every week.
That's why I'd like to start it right away.
And because I don't know your business and how you both run each of your businesses, I wasn't sure if that's doable.
And the other thing is, we have to, as council, I think we need to look at the citizens also of what they want.
Right.
And to me, they want what the city want, or what the citizens want, and that's what they're telling me is they want every recycling, every other week.
Okay. Would you mind coming up so we can get that recorded?
The only problem I got with that is, if we're gonna recycle every other week for 50 people, what about the 700 people that can figure out what their day is every week, or every other week?
Exactly, and that's...
I mean, you're gonna throw all them guys off.
Sure, and we will at first. It will at first.
And if the recycling increases and we have to do that, I'm all for that.
Okay. And that's what I'm saying is, it's gonna be a communication...
I got a question for Mark.
Major communication. Hold on, Jeff, Jeff had something to say about this before we go into the next one.
It's also a cost issue. I mean, it doesn't take $2 to run out and drive my truck around town. It's quite a bit of money to get involved in recycling.
Okay.
Being we don't really get paid for it.
But it also does cut down on your tonnage at the landfill.
Okay.
But if you recycle more, hopefully it will.
And that's what we're gonna try to push.
I showed Trish my paperwork from August till now from recycling. Started off two ton. I'm saving $70. It's cost me a lot more than $70 to go out and pick it up.
So we're getting there. Now, it did drop a little bit.
It is strong, but now the last two weeks, it's dropped down to not even a ton again.
I believe that we continue with our campaign of recycle, 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 and I don't wanna sound like, you know, we're beating a dead horse, but I think that's what it takes as well. Tom, you wanted to pose a question?
Yeah, I just, I'm sitting here thinking, what comes first, the chicken or the egg?
Chicken.
If, you know, if they don't stop every other week to pick up, then what's going to spur citizens to recycle more?
And right now, yeah, so there's...
I think we, I think we need to give the citizens the ability to pick up on a more frequent basis, and then they will grab, they will gradually move towards recycling more.
Do we notice the fifth of the month, when we have a five-week month, if that is hit fuller outside the recyclable container? Or is that just always full?
It's always full.
Okay.
I don't, but on Tuesday or Wednesday, it's full sometimes by Sunday night or so.
Yeah, yeah. I think people are waiting to see you take it out to fill it back up. Okay.
A lot of people know right when I do it, because there's a lineup soon as I get back waiting for me.
But that's more than just curbside people.
Yeah, that's...
It's not what it's meant for, but that's more than curbside people.
If you look at the addresses and stuff, there's a lot of out-of-town people bringing their stuff to town, which, whatever, I guess.
I know, it's hard.
That's a cost for us, as a fortunate part.
Yeah, a cost for us too. Yes, sir.
Do we have recycled containers left in inventory?
We're low.
We have approximately 50 or 60.
And that's something we will need to look at at the city. But right now, gentlemen...
I think that would be the best way to go, is get bigger cans instead of doing it every other week.
Right. And right now, when you go out and pick up recyclables, it doesn't matter what containers or bags it's in. Whatever's out on recyclables, as long as it's recyclables, you're gonna take it.
Right.
Which is a blessing right now, as we try to figure out what that's gonna look like.
How big are those blue containers? 30 gallons?
The ones that we have, I don't know. They're tiny.
20. Those little ones are 20.
And the automated ones are?
You can get, you can get 96, yeah.
Yeah.
65.
But you remember, we started back in the early 90s with those 20-gallon...
Yep.
Just to start recycling.
Yeah.
And now we've come so far. I, just the other night, when I put my garage out, I had two little bags. So, I was very proud of my family, even though...
I think that, I mean, the question you're getting about having it picked up more often is because that container is full overflowing.
We're almost switching.
If you had a bigger container, that may not be the case, that you'd have, I mean, the three-week thing might be...
I'd rather she has pulled that route than take away the fifth week. A lot of times, if we need work on the trucks, that fifth week is a good week for us.
Oh, sure.
And we realize it's not something that can even be expected within the next week or two.
And with that, if you got 50 people that don't understand it, but 700 that do.
Yep.
With the equipment that you currently have, can you deal with all those sizes of containers?
Yep.
Okay.
So that's something we need to visit about is, in time, if that's something we can do every other week, like within a year, but also, we, as the city, need to look at our container size for recyclables.
I think we need to set a, we need to set a date for this so that we all work towards that date.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, it'll just not, it may not happen. So, I think we need to put a timeframe on it, to be honest with you guys, so.
I would say next, I don't think winter is a good time to look into that, so let's give this, I don't know, Council, what you think, but come back next June, July, and start talking about the feasibility of going every other, but also that gives us time to research recyclable containers, if there's grants available, et cetera. Because I think that will help too, because the amount of recycling, if we have larger containers.
There is some grant money available for that.
And I know Sean had looked some of that up before, but it...
It wasn't as much as we thought, but it was there.
Ange has a question.
So, you both have recycling containers that you sell to your customers, right?
Mm-hmm.
What size are those?
So I'm not sure what the purpose would be that we would need to buy them too.
Well, that's, I just, that's a question that I have.
Okay.
I don't know if that's...
That's just what the city did before, was buy them. That's the only...
We bought them in Seoul.
And then we actually, no, we provided one to every household in town.
Yeah, because if I remember, if I remember right, I ended up, through my previous owner, the store, we sold those to the city, and I think there was a grant that we got back then that we could give one to each community member, each resident.
You are correct.
And that's why, the other reason I wanna look into it is because if you two are considering taking on that investment of the waste, solid waste receptacle, I would like to look into, because I know Sean had found some information and some grant. It wasn't as much money as we had hoped for for recycling bins.
We talked about, Keith came up with a good idea that buy one from us, get one from the city.
Exactly.
So that way we'd all be done.
I think we're making good strides. Just in this little bit of, the code enforcement has been a plus for our community. I'm seeing it as I drive around. So we do know, like, within the next year, then let's work at how we can better, whether it's the every other week and container size, give us a goal to start shooting for that and looking to see what opportunities are available. Discussion, comments? Yes, Greg?
The one question I have, and we have a goal now of fully automated by 2021.
December 2021, yes.
To me, that container and that automated are go-hand in hand, I mean, right? Is there any? Yeah. Is there any reason why that couldn't be pushed to 2020? Why are we waiting two years rather than one?
Two and a half years? Well, because right now, our customers, our residents of Sheldon, are slowly budgeting in the expense of the wastewater treatment facility. So, I just thought, another expense, let's just try to be a little easy. That's just my thinking. Maybe I'm being too global and should just say, let's do this, but I thought, would that give you time to get them ordered, get them stickered?
It's not like your trucks have to be, you have to have a different truck or new equipment. You don't have to update the equipment to make that work.
All your trucks have to be, right?
It's strictly a container issue.
Yeah.
I just thought two and a half years might be good, just because we're going through the expense of increasing our utility bills with water and whatnot. Give them a chance to get everybody up to speed. If you think two and a half years is too long, maybe a year and a half. I don't know. That was just a suggestion.
We're considering raising this rate for the next few years too, so it's not like that there isn't a change happening as far as that rate increase to the citizens as well. So, maybe we accelerate it like Greg's talking about, and maybe they'll feel a little more bang for their buck too. It may, it may be a good time to do it.
Okay. So, yes, Jeff, or you just...
My suggestion would be, right now, if people want to buy them...
They're there.
They're here. I've got them. I can get them within a week. If they wanna buy them, buy them.
Right.
Instead of going to a different place and getting a little can.
Yes.
I don't know, maybe Brad can handle them. Maybe he can order 65-gallon cans.
I wonder.
Sell them out of his place. I don't care where people get them.
Just as long as they get them.
I'd just like to see them get them.
Right.
That's all I'm...
And that's why I wanna visit the option of, because we had different prices too when we were researching this this past year. Sean found places where we could find them cheaper than we have in the past. So, and I think, I don't know how many customers about, is it a third of your customers, Mark, that do have the hydraulic cans now? And two-thirds do not?
I would say, uh...
Around there? And Jeff, what would you say yours is?
I'm pushing up to almost half.
Almost half?
The last two months, they've sold.
I'd sell them. I'd probably sell three to five a week, so.
That's nice. I just would like to see us, as a community, get to that. So, yes, Greg?
That's for garbage, not recycling.
That's garbage. We're only talking garbage.
I'd sell, since recycling started, I sold probably...
One can.
I sold one ton. I probably sold a dozen or two just for recycling. There, people are buying them too. Some people want the 96, some people want the other ones. So, I made it up to them if they wanted. The bigger ones, they can have. The bigger ones are the same one, the 65.
I know mom has expressed concerns about larger cans, but I countered that by telling, well, they'll be on wheels, and so... They're wheeled very easily.
You should look at it sometime. I have one at home for garbage, and... 96-gallon?
75, I think.
65.
65. Remember, trash is 65.
The next size up is, it will take up some room in your garage, the 96-gallon one, believe me.
Brad, I see you...
So that I don't know if we're ready for, you know...
Comment?
When, when discussion's available?
Go ahead.
You know, as much as we do the song and dance here over this garbage, I think the city needs to get out of the garbage. Let the private haulers do what they wanna do, and the city wipe their hands of it. Instead of going around in a circle, how many hours have we wasted? What do we have to do? Do we have to provide it by law? Micah?
Recycling, you have to.
I know the recycling do. We do.
So you're gonna take on the recycling all your own?
Well, let's ask the, hold on, hold on.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying...
I am too.
That's just...
You guys came down...
No, let me talk.
Hold on.
Hey, I got the floor here.
Hold on. Go ahead, Brad.
Let's just get out of the garbage business and the recycling business and let the private haulers take care of it.
Micah, what is your comment to that question Brad posed?
From what I can tell of my review of the code and the administrative code, the city has some general duty in terms of waste management. But the code doesn't say you have to have a contract with a private hauler, and it doesn't say, city, you have to do it as a utility. I mean, you'll, if you survey area communities, you'll see both of those options. Whether the city could fulfill its obligations to the citizens and comply with the basic requirements about waste management with a totally free enterprise system, I guess that would be up for debate. But you're not gonna find a code section that says, city has to enter into a private contract, or has to...
Provide garbage.
Provide it on its own. It certainly has involvement in some fashion.
Right. Because we, it seems like we waste a whole lot of energy over garbage.
I just think we've spun our wheels a lot the past year, and I feel like we're getting somewhere now with the enforcement of the ordinance. We're recycling better, and we're ready to come back and renegotiate a contract going forward with a goal of becoming fully automated so that our haulers can become, or with hydraulics, so that they have the option to become fully automated and then continue to enhance receptacles for recyclables. Yes?
I don't know if any of them were here. Todd, you might have been here when we started this. I can't remember.
I've been here 18 years, so it's possible.
We started this, the city came to the haulers because they had to have a way to pick up recycling curbside. That's why we got into it. It wasn't because we had to or looking to do anything. That's, we figured we'd help the city out. I mean, I was told that the city didn't do it, they were gonna get fined a lot of money if they didn't have curbside recyclers.
And I'm in favor of it. I think it, the enforcement of solid waste that can be put out and when it has to be picked up and it can't sit out there. I feel like we've gotten somewhere. I just feel like the past year, we did spin our wheels, but we're finally making progress. So before us today, and I don't have a copy of what our contract said in the past, my apologies, would be, if you were ready... Right now, we're at 1575, is this correct? I wanna make sure I have the right information before me. That's an old one, isn't it? That's 2011. One moment. I have a 2011 piece of paper. Right now, what is our garbage pickup? For a resident? Yeah, the, what, is it 15? What did you say?
16 and a quarter. Yeah, 75 cents left.
I think that is right, 15 and a quarter.
15 and a quarter?
15 or 16?
1, 1.525 right now, is your portion, correct?
Just to clarify, everybody's bill does not reflect 1525 because the city adds a fee on to it for all of our work that we do.
Okay, thank you.
That was not clear.
Well, as of August 1st, 2014, it was 1525.
There we go. Thank you. And what we had proposed today is a no increase for this year, but come August 1st, 2019, a 25% increase, bringing it to 1550.
25 cents.
Yeah, 25 cents. Let me have a sip. 25-cent increase, August 1, 2019, again, 2020, 2021, and 2022. The goal of having, becoming everybody with a hydraulic garbage can can be revisited instead of a year and a half?
I think we need to put a date to it, Mayor.
Yep, so what date would you have in mind?
Something of that nature.
Pardon me? July?
July 1st of 2019.
2019. So that's six months? Excuse me, 1, 2, says 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 months.
It's past the winter, as you mentioned, so... I would think in six months, we could figure that out, can't we?
Here's my, here's my only concern with that, Tom. If you're...
Here's my, here's my only concern with that, Tom. If you're talking about implementing something July one of twenty nineteen that could potentially cost us money, that means that has to get into the budget, which you approve in February, which means I have to have all of our pricing and stuff worked done by, what, Ange? Fifteenth of December?
December, yeah.
So when you say July one of nineteen, understand for, for our end, for staff, you mean December fifteen of eighteen.
Okay. So if we were to make it six months later, does that really change that scenario?
It does not. It's in the same fiscal year. Unless you're going to do a budget amendment.
No.
I'm just saying, if you want it in front of you with pricing and budgeting, staff would need to have whatever work you request of us done by December fifteen of eighteen. So if that's what you want, that's what we'll try, but. No, I think in light of the fact that we're still looking for a city, some more assistance, I think it would be wise to put it off a little further than that.
A year and a half is where.
So if, if we were to adopt this agreement today, it would be dated today, correct? It would be effective.
Their contract, yes.
Yes.
But our goals, our goals are just things that we are working on.
Correct. I just wanted to clarify that because another alternative would be is to make this just a one-year contract and then address this, this issue as far as what we're trying to do on the recycling side of it a little bit, and have that then available for that new contract. That would be another alternative towards it. That would have a deadline.
Technically, if we agreed to something, I don't think it would start until October one because the extension was through September thirty.
So that would move my July one date to October one then, correct, Ange? If it was a one-year contract.
Yes, but you're still in the same fiscal year, so it's still the same scenario. Yep.
Would it make more sense to make it July one? I mean, kind of shoot for the middle, instead of December of twenty twenty, make it July of twenty twenty?
That's what I was saying.
That's, that's the fiscal year.
July twenty, July one.
Fiscal year.
That gives us over a year.
Yeah.
For our staff tour. Yeah.
That becomes much more realistic on our end.
Given the fact that you already have your plates pretty full, that maybe.
We're hungry.
We'll hopefully have someone in place by then.
There's only so much you can consume.
No, I, I appreciate that. I'm glad you explained that, Todd and Angie. It's, I'm just trying to move it along, is what I'm.
Yeah, I think that, I would.
I can appreciate that. I just, everybody's going to understand where we're at.
Yep. No, it's fine.
Any other comment as far as contract? Okay, Sean?
I'm good.
Okay, Brad, anything more? So.
Because we'll need some clear direction at some point prior to then, and exactly what you want as well.
Right.
So if.
And that's something we'd have to work at. If that's something we're going to require, I'm sorry, Tom, I just butt in. If that's something we're going to ask our residents to do, then that's something that eventually we'll have to change in our ordinance where it says one sixty-five gallon hydraulic container. That's it. But that gives people time to get there, and that gives us time then in a year and a half to change the ordinance as well. So I think we're good with our goal, because then we can also chat about these different container sizes for recycling. And then what would be the feasibility of doing it every other week? Any other comments as far as Toms to the contract only being shortened instead of through twenty twenty-two? Is there any?
Were you talking about the goal of being completely automated or altering the contract?
Well, that's where my concern is at, is that if we go with the contract as being shown here, we've got a five-year contract in place, and we're going to basically change a pretty good portion of that agreement.
So it'd be cleaner to have a new contract when we go fully automated?
That's my, that's what I'm asking the rest of you guys to comment on, so.
So then the contract would go through twenty twenty? So it'd be a
Correct.
Year and a half.
Or, yeah. You're going to take it to this date in twenty twenty? So it'd be a two-year contract then, correct? From October one of?
Because right now, we've just been extending it. It's August. We've extended it, so, yeah.
I guess I don't see why it's still getting by years, and if you need to do alterations, we can do that at the time. I mean, we've done it here, like Brad says, we were going to.
Right.
So you're more in favor of the five-year contract?
I'm more in favor of ten years. You're done with it.
I don't want to talk about it anymore.
Ten years to get the little one back.
Right. My recommendation is to go at least a four-year contract, so at least they're twenty, let's see, we have nineteen, twenty.
With the ability to amend it?
Correct. Well, the other thing we have to keep in mind too is, is if there's a significant rate change, that's something we might want to revisit too. If, God forbid, if the landfill decided to jack things up by an astronomical figure, we've had that also. So going forward, be twenty-five cents, August first, two thousand nineteen, again, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, with the goal of becoming all hydraulic sixty-five gallon containers by July one, twenty twenty, which gives us time with budget stuff, gives you time to prepare as well, and letting our residents know, and the opportunity to revisit as needed.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
Support.
Further discussion?
So is this four-year contract or five-year contract or what? I didn't, did you go, change it to a four?
It would go through a twenty-five cent increase on August one, two thousand twenty-two, and that's when we begin to renegotiate for the next.
And then we can amend it. Does that need to be added to the language of this?
Yes, such as when it comes to recycling and whatnot. Any other questions, comments, discussion? May I please have a roll call? Brewster?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Thank you. Jeff, Mark, thank you. Thank you for taking the time to meet with me aside from things, and, and we'll keep talking recycling. But let's take a break, okay? All right. Thank you very much. Oh, business that wants to recycle, all you have to do, if you'll help me out here, Frank and Ty, businesses have called the city office, and they've called the haulers as well. If you are a business and you want recycling, call your hauler. They offer it, it's for everyone. Call your hauler and make a schedule or find out what it is that you need to do so they'll pick it up.
Because on that note, I do now, I keep my recycling up on Monday morning. My truck is free for recycling from Wednesday morning until Monday.
So, free recyc, okay, you're available. Sounds good. If you miss it, bring it out to Schwartz Sanitary, North Fifth Avenue. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, council. Where is my agenda? Okay, then we will skip back to number five. Consider approval of passment number four already with the wastewater treatment facility project. This amount is seven hundred forty thousand, three hundred seven dollars and fifty-four cents. All is going well out there.
Yeah, all is going well. The bulk of this pay request is concrete and rebar. They've been pouring the SBR cells themselves is what their primary focus has been.
The what is their primary focus?
SBR cells, sequencing batch reactors.
Thank you. Sorry, I just want to see if you know what you're talking about.
Nah.
I know you do. Thank you. So do we have a motion to approve passment number four?
So moved.
Uh, it was Brad and Greg?
Whoever.
Right? Oh, Tom, Brad and Tom. One of them moved, one of them.
It's fine.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Gills?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Thanks. Number six, consider community members to be part of the city manager interview panel. I had asked if you could come back with some names. Then what I would like to do from going from here is we together, council and I, can reach out to these people in the community and gather their interest. I hope people have come to you and shared their interest. If not, I do have a couple of names that I would like to share to be on this panel. Does anyone, anybody have any recommendations? We're looking three to five people from the community.
I'm sorry, I don't have any recommendations.
It's okay.
I have a recommendation, but I have not talked to him, so can you still, you still want that?
If you would, if you want to share that with me privately then.
Sure.
Okay. Does anybody have anyone that they spoke to that they want to share with yet?
Trying to make contact, but I haven't.
One that I have that has confirmed is Wayne Barahona. He, I have talked to him about it, and he would be willing to serve on the interview board. So we're going to need a few more people. And what I would, yes, sir?
How many are you looking for, Mayor?
Uh, three to five. So now it will be just a few more. If we could have four more recommendations or more, because we might reach out to someone and they could say no. Ange, you know, anybody off the top of your heads either?
I have an idea of a couple that I haven't talked to anybody yet.
That's confirmed. I guess what I want to get at is, we want to invite the community, yet I've only had, I can only share one name right now, for sure. I said two, and I apologize about that. But we want people to be involved, but it's hard to get people involved, so if maybe you could help us, like on your websites today, council, if you could reach out a little bit more. I'd like to get those secured, finalized, confirmed, and off to Hinson Consulting firm once we have those names gathered.
What would be the dates that we would, if they asked, when would they need to be participating in?
So Friday evening, we are planning.
October five, six.
Thank you. October five, Friday. Yes. So what we're going to expect of these people is Friday evening, October five, a reception at the Crossroads Pavilion. And then Saturday, October sixth, seven thirty, we'll gather for breakfast until about eight fifteen. We'll break out into interviews, have a lunch break, break out into interviews, and they should be done around from there. It will be council and staff and myself going into that determination. So it would be about a seven thirty to a three o'clock day on October sixth, Saturday. And that's going to sneak up on us fast, so if you could get any recommendations to me soon, I would appreciate that. I, I almost want to take them on a first come, first served. Let's just get it. We have one confirmed. We need three or four more, please. So think about that. Know anybody?
Nope. Well, I know some people.
I know people too. Okay, keep that in mind. I was hoping that we might have a list together, but I understand, we're all busy too. This just is a crazy time of year, so if we could get that compiled, that would be wonderful. Council, do you have comments? Or staff, Lyle, anything? Okay, thank you. Brad, any updates?
Not unless you want them. If you got a specific one you want, I'll give it to you. Otherwise, I'm good.
I'm good right now.
Are they catching up on Sixteenth Street? I know you had mentioned in your email that they were working harder.
They are working harder. They're getting some patching done. They do intend on tearing out some driveways next week. We have provided notices to those homeowners that it will, will affect. Hopefully, they get it done since we went through the process of notification.
Thank you.
Yep.
Council comments? All right, I have a few. I have a list. I even printed my stuff out. Greg, thank you for bringing this to my attention. There is a Healthiest State Annual, all ninety-nine counties in Iowa are encouraged to get out and help us become state. NCC is hosting this event on October third at the LLRC parking lot. The town, they're encouraging everyone to get out and walk for a half hour on Wednesday, October third. Then the Crossroads Pavilion had an awesome event with I Am He Said, the Neil Diamond concert. Thank you for everybody that put that on. They have another concert coming up on September twenty-eighth, a blues guitarist. Blues and bluegrass. He's blues.
Blues.
Yes. And that is a free will offering. There's no ticket price. Come one, come all. And then for an update regarding our city search for the city manager, all five candidates that Hinson Consulting reached out to have accepted interviews. So we will expect all five candidates. In the near future, if you have specific questions, council and staff, that you would like to contribute to this, please get those to me or to Hinson Consulting as soon as possible. And remember, we need to get them the list of the community members that will be part of the interview panels. So all I got. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you.
That was tough.
Roll call, please. Gills?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Yeah, we have places to go.